Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education meeting. Regular meeting, 6:00 PM, April 17th, 2023. Call or roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Here.
Mrs. Innes.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mrs. Stepp.
Here.
Mr. Johnston.
Here.
All members present?
Alright, so what we'd like to do is lead off with our Vermillion Elementary School Students of the Month. So if you're a Student of the Month, can you please come up?
This is the little guy.
This is the best part. I don't know who he is.
Henry, you stand right here, buddy. And everybody else in the line behind you. Right behind Henry.
Alright, so listen, what we're gonna do before we do the pledge of allegiance. Everyone's gonna get a chance to talk and talk. Right here. Who's ready?
Yeah, he is. We got him. There he is. He's gone. Can't see him.
Alright, take your first.
Henry.
Right here he is.
Henry.
Take me for all.
An astronaut.
We get a lot of astronauts.
My name's Wes.
I am Wes.
Henry.
Henry.
Hi, Dad.
Alright, we're great, you kids. First, who want to be a girl?
Engineer.
Engineer. I know, what grade are you in?
Guys.
Would you want to be a girl?
Teacher.
Excellent.
I'm in eighth. I'm in first grade, and what I wanna be to grow up is an artist.
Good job. Very good. What year are you in?
Okay.
Hey, so what grade are you in?
First.
What grade are you in?
Artist.
Artist, excellent.
Singer.
Singer. I say, what grade are you in?
Third.
What would you like to be a girl?
Arts.
Arts, art. You must have good art.
I'm in good art.
Great in art.
First.
What do you want to be a girl?
I don't know.
Yeah, playtime.
I still have a little meter. Put your name, last one out there.
Daisy.
Daisy, what grade are you in?
First.
What would you like to be?
Accountologist.
Alright, can you guys leave us in the pledge of allegiance? Turn, face the flag. Alright, whenever you guys are ready. Ready?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great job, Dan. Just look at all of that.
Don't see anybody.
Okay, always the best part of the meeting. Item number four, the legislative report. Crystal?
Yes, so I just have a few bills that I'm gonna talk about. It looks like these were new bills that were introduced. They're all still kinda pending, but, so we'll just kinda touch on these. The first one is House Bill 47. This one would require each school to place an AED in the building. They would also be required to provide training to teachers, principals, administrative employees, coaches, athletic trainers, and any person who supervises interscholastic athletics. A lot into this bill, you know, it'd also require quarterly training and plans and updates and that sort of thing. That is currently pending in the House Health Providers Services Committee. House Bill 63, which would require schools to provide age-appropriate classroom instruction on conflict resolution to students in grades K through 12. That one is currently pending in the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee. House 135, which would require schools to provide an excused absence for students to participate in 4-H and FFA programs or events. That one had a lot of information with it as well, such as the students would be required to make up their work. They would not be allowed to miss if they were under discipline, like on a suspension or something like that. That would not be an excused absence then to attend those events. You would still have to allow them to go to, like, after-school activities, even if they missed that day for those events. That one is pending in the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee as well. And then last, that I wrote about, Senate Bill 99, which would require districts to create an individualized seizure action plan for each student with a diagnosed seizure disorder. That one is waiting for committee referral in the state. That's all I got.
Alright, thank you. So I guess I didn't know this, but AEDs are not mandatory at this time?
No, but just about everybody has.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
That's what I think. I was advised to read that, too. Yeah, yeah. I think the training, I thought was interesting of it, too, right? Because it's one thing to have it in the building, but then...
To have it and know how to use it.
Do you know how to use it.
Do you know how to use it, so to have everybody be required to get the training for it, too. I thought it was a good part of that.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, item five, Student Liaison Report. Sarah?
Okay, so today I have some students, I believe, Jacqueline, for National History Day. No? I wasn't sure who is coming today.
Hello, I'm Leah Innes, and my teaching partner is Angela DeWitt. We do National History Day every year with our seventh-grade students. This is actually our 11th year doing this project. It is a national competition, and our students start researching their topics for this project end of September, October, and it extends all the way through March at our first competition. So these students put a lot of time and effort into these projects, and it's not just a simple research project. They can't just kind of regurgitate information. National History Day provides a theme every year, and students have to relate their topic to that theme and tell why it made an impact in history. So it's a little bit more extensive than just a simple research project, which is why I love it so much. This year's theme was frontiers in history, so the students had to fix something that was new or a new place, and we took about 40 students to competition a few weeks ago. That competition was a regional competition in Fremont, Ohio, and this Saturday, we will take 15 of those 40 students to the state competition in Ohio Wesleyan University. The national competition calls over the summer in Washington, DC, and hopefully maybe some of our students will make it. So two of our students are here, Riley Sanders and Oliver Matthews, so they're gonna talk to a few minutes about their topic, their subject.
So our topic was Victoria Woodhull. She was the first woman to run for the President of the United States.
She was a very independent and strong woman for her time, because when this had been taken place, it was in the 1800s, so as you know, it was a very difficult time for women in general. She had fought for women's rights, such as women's rights above, and she fought for the Free Love Act, so she could marry whoever she wanted or divorce whoever she wanted. She had drawn through much, a lot of stuff to influence her as a child to push forward, and one of the things that I found that really helped her was her ex, one of her first husbands that she had married was very neglectful with her views toward her and her children, so she had to work three jobs herself to provide for her family. I found that helped her a lot throughout her ways, and I thought that was great. Another very interesting fact that I learned was that her vice president was actually slavery abolished, abolished her. So it was great to see that she was trying to help women's rights while he was also trying to help with slavery and stop it. So I found that that was a great thing for just the time period that it was specifically. I felt like that was just an amazing one. She ran for presidency, like, she, as soon as they were about to be voting, she was thrown in jail for an inappropriate newspaper that she had wrote, because she wrote books, newspapers. She was also one of the first people, the first women to have a brokerage firm on, I can't necessarily remember the street specifically, I'm sorry, but she had been thrown in jail right before voting for presidency. So she wasn't able to become president, even though she was a very good candidate at the time. Some people either adored or hated her. A lot of people say, some people say that she was not technically the first woman to run for president, since she wasn't able to be voted for, but a lot of people have given more facts to back up the fact that she wasn't even the first woman to try and run for president. Thank you for letting us come here, have a great day.
Great job, guys. Item six, public participation on agenda items only. Each participant is allowed three minutes to speak, and the total time allotted for public participation is 30 minutes. Please register your name, address, topic, and group affiliation, if applicable. I don't have anyone registered right now for this part of the agenda. Item seven, Dr. Hile.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'm really excited to introduce our new student school board members. As you know, or may not know, the last few months, the Board has created a Student School Board Member Program, and these two students that I'm going to introduce applied to be on the school board through the National Honor Society. They're National Honor Society members, and it was open to anybody that was a junior or senior. They put in applications, they did an interview, and so I just wanna introduce the two folks that are gonna be joining our Board as student school board members. Ladies first, Scarlett Oliver is a senior at Vermillion High School. She's been in the Vermillion School District since preschool and has been heavily involved in the arts and in many academic extracurriculars. She's been in majorettes for seven years, serving as head majorette for the past two years. She's been in every play and musical since her eighth-grade year, and has been involved in both band and choir, serving in various leadership roles in each. And I don't know if you saw Beauty and the Beast, but she was the star, and I was so impressed with her. Her singing was, it was professional, it really was. I was so impressed with her. It was one of the best musicals I've ever seen. Scar's been the president of Vermillion Acapella Group, Sound Station for the last two years as well. She's been her class president for three years and is her class treasurer currently. She's a National Honor Society president, and she's involved in National Green School Society and in the diversity union. She works at Dairy Dock in the summers and enjoy, you're way overqualified. And enjoys spending time on the lake however she can. Scar's very excited for the opportunity to sit on the school board, and she is going off to college to become a high school history teacher, and she's excited to learn about the inner workings of the school district. So, welcome, Scarlett.
That's great.
And Scarlett wrote that, so if it's wrong, I think it's wrong. And next, we have Reagan Massey. Reagan's a junior at Vermillion High School. He's involved in many extracurricular activities. He's been a three-year letterman in soccer, participates in indoor track. He's a two-year going-on-three-year letterman in outdoor track and a one-year letterman in swim. Outside of high school athletics, Reagan participates in multiple clubs. These clubs include Ski Club, Academic Challenge, Model United Nations, Leo Club, National Honor Society, and will be going to Buckeye Boys State this summer. With his many accomplishments in his extracurricular activities, Reagan has strived to push himself in the classroom. Reagan is ranked third in his class, has a 4.41 GPA, and in his three years at Vermillion High School, he has pursued a rigorous schedule, including many honors, CCP, and AP courses. Along with his full plate in the classroom, on the field, and his participation in clubs, Reagan finds time to work at Romps Water Port, again, you're overqualified, working the gas docks and overseas putt-putt. Using the little free time that he has, it allows him to enjoy hanging out with his friends, preferably at Texas Roadhouse, spending time with his family, and going to the driving range. With his electric personality, driven work ethic, and willingness to put others before himself, Reagan is the perfect example of what a Vermillion sailor truly is.
That's awesome.
And under number eight, I recommend that the Board approve a resolution to accept the resignation of Board Member Eric Johnston.
Dave, before you do that...
Yes.
You've got on here oath of office.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped you guys. You have to take the oath of office. Yes.
Yeah.
Let's go back a step. Mr. Klingshorn will give you guys, you have to raise your hand and take the oath of office.
Stand up. Come on over here. Face, face Mr. Klingshorn. Make sure they get your good side there. You raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
Honestly and impartially...
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge the duties of a school board member...
Discharge the duties of a school board member.
...of the Vermillion Local School District to which I have been elected.
Of the Vermillion Local School District to which I've been elected.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, now item eight. Now to number eight. I recommend that the Board approve a resolution to accept the resignation of School Board Member Eric Johnston, effective April 18th, 2023.
I'll move.
I'll second. Anything to say, Eric?
I would, actually. First off, I'd like to thank the Board members. It's been great working alongside you. Obviously, I'm not resigning because I want to, or not because I have to, it's because I need to. I wanna thank Dr. Hile and Mr. Klingshorn for the great working relationship with the Board members. I know that going forward, there's lots of good things you guys will do. It's been an honor working with both of you. It was an honor hiring you, Dave, and bringing you here. I think you're a great asset to our district, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Going with this, the reason I'm resigning is not due to any conflict of interest. It is solely due to the fact that I've accepted a principal's position in Sandusky City Schools. With the opinions of others thinking that it is a conflict of interest, I let the Board know, Dave and Justin know, in late February, that if I got this job, I would be resigning, and submitted my letter of resignation on 3/15, the day after I accepted the job. So I just wanna put it out there that if anybody has seen or seen any post on Facebook or anywhere, that this was well before, my resignation was well before, any so-called news reporter said that I was in conflict of interest, and that it was emailed to me and to the Board that I would be resigning due to the fact of taking a principal's position in Sandusky City Schools. So again, I appreciate the time I've had with you. It's been great working with you. I know you do great things.
And you're gonna do great.
Thanks.
Yes, we're excited for you.
Eric, congratulations on your new job.
Thank you.
That's great news. And saying back to you, it's been a pleasure working with you on the Board here.
Thank you.
Okay, item nine. Try to think of, oh yeah, they do have to vote on, don't we?
Yep.
She'd deny him.
Sorry, I had you out the door already, I'm sorry. Call or roll, please?
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
And Mr. Johnston.
I'm staying.
Thank you.
Item nine, Treasurer's Recommendations.
Thank you. Number one, recommend a resolution to approve the financial report for March 2023, and that is attachment A.
I'll move. I'll second.
Mrs. Russell and Mrs. Innes. Alright. Going over the general fund revenue, through the month of March, the district received $22.5 million in general fund revenue compared to $21.6 million at this time last year and $22.2 million in fiscal year '21. As such, the district is on pace to collect its historical average revenue. Moving on to food service, through the month of March, the district received $617,000 in food service funds compared to $690,000 at this time last year and $348,000 in fiscal year '21. Despite food service not being 100% subsidized by the government like last year, our revenue has been higher than forecasted due to increased participation. Food service has been doing a tremendous job of changing the meals around, changing the menu around, and getting participation.
Just for the students, so the food service program, the goal is for it to be self-sufficient, meaning that it pays for itself, that when you guys buy lunches, the students buy lunches, enough buy lunches, that the revenue that is raised covers the cost for the kitchen and so that we don't have to transfer money to cover that, and that's, he's reporting, that's what's happening.
We'll look at all funds. So through the month of March, the district received $25.2 million in all funds compared to $27.6 million at this time last year and $24.6 million in fiscal year '21. Again, the district is on pace to collect its historical average revenue. Moving on to the expenditure side, for the general funds, through the month of March, the district has expended $20 million, $20.1 million from the general fund compared to $17.8 million at this time last year and $17.5 million in fiscal year '21. So far this year, the district has spent $3.3 million more in salaries than it did the previous year, and this is because last year, we reclassed, so reduction of expenditure, $1.9 million from the ARPSer funds. The remaining salary increase of $1.4 million was from moving staff from a bi-weekly to a bi-monthly pay, as well as renegotiate, I'm sorry, negotiated increases. Likewise, our retirement and insurance benefits have increased, creating an additional $265,000 more this year than the previous year. Purchase services are up roughly $500,000 more than this time last year. This is because the district entered into an additional lease for Apple products at the beginning of the year. That additional lease cost $100,000, and then we also, in the fall, repaired the baseball and softball fields, and that was a cost of $264,000. On top of that, there's also been increased rates, you know, through other things, so like with purchase services, our water bill, our gas bill, our electric bill, those things have all gone up, as well as the cost of contractors. This year, we also purchased a bus for $109,000, which we didn't do the previous year. So in total, the district has spent $2.3 million more in general fund dollars this fiscal year than last fiscal year at this time. Moving on to our food service expenditures, through the month of March, the district has expended $661,000 in food service compared to $678,000 at this time last year and $462,000 in fiscal year '21. Things that have been mentioned before and in past Board meetings, but negotiated salary increases and the cost of food are the two main drivers for those increases. And then looking at all fund expenditures through the month of March, the district has expended $23.1 million from all funds compared to $21.9 million at this time last year and $19.8 million in fiscal year '21. The district is on pace to spend more than its historical average for reasons mentioned in the general fund spending. And then we'll look at cash. Through the month of March, the district has a total of $21.3 million in cash from the general fund compared to $21.7 at this time last year and $28.8 million in fiscal year '21. Looking at food service through the month of March, the district has a total of $338,000 in cash compared to $193,000 in fiscal year '22 and $60,000 in fiscal year '21. And then all cash through the month of March, the district has a total of $26.4 million compared to $27.3 million at this time last year and $24.3 million in fiscal year '21. The district currently does have a few negative accounts. Our athletic account, our 300 account, is negative $26,000. Our ARPSer 507 fund is negative $5,600. Our account 572, our Title I, is negative $20,000, and our 590 account, Title II, is negative $21,000. All of those 500 accounts will be reimbursed once the project cash request that I sent into ODE get returned to us. And then lastly, we'll take a look on the investment side. Through the month of March, the district has earned a total of $210,734.49 on interest compared to $122,305.10 at this time last year. This is a difference of $88,429.39, or 72.3% more in interest this year. Any questions?
Call or roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
And Mr. Johnston.
I'm staying.
Thank you.
Item nine, Treasurer's Recommendations.
Thank you. Number one, recommend a resolution to approve the financial report for March 2023, and that is attachment A.
I'll move. I'll second.
Mrs. Russell and Mrs. Innes. Alright. Going over the general fund revenue, through the month of March, the district received $22.5 million in general fund revenue compared to $21.6 million at this time last year and $22.2 million in fiscal year '21. As such, the district is on pace to collect its historical average revenue. Moving on to food service, through the month of March, the district received $617,000 in food service funds compared to $690,000 at this time last year and $348,000 in fiscal year '21. Despite food service not being 100% subsidized by the government like last year, our revenue has been higher than forecasted due to increased participation. Food service has been doing a tremendous job of changing the meals around, changing the menu around, and getting participation.
Just for the students, so the food service program, the goal is for it to be self-sufficient, meaning that it pays for itself, that when you guys buy lunches, the students buy lunches, enough buy lunches, that the revenue that is raised covers the cost for the kitchen and so that we don't have to transfer money to cover that, and that's, he's reporting, that's what's happening.
We'll look at all funds. So through the month of March, the district received $25.2 million in all funds compared to $27.6 million at this time last year and $24.6 million in fiscal year '21. Again, the district is on pace to collect its historical average revenue. Moving on to the expenditure side, for the general funds, through the month of March, the district has expended $20 million, $20.1 million from the general fund compared to $17.8 million at this time last year and $17.5 million in fiscal year '21. So far this year, the district has spent $3.3 million more in salaries than it did the previous year, and this is because last year, we reclassed, so reduction of expenditure, $1.9 million from the ARPSer funds. The remaining salary increase of $1.4 million was from moving staff from a bi-weekly to a bi-monthly pay, as well as renegotiate, I'm sorry, negotiated increases. Likewise, our retirement and insurance benefits have increased, creating an additional $265,000 more this year than the previous year. Purchase services are up roughly $500,000 more than this time last year. This is because the district entered into an additional lease for Apple products at the beginning of the year. That additional lease cost $100,000, and then we also, in the fall, repaired the baseball and softball fields, and that was a cost of $264,000. On top of that, there's also been increased rates, you know, through other things, so like with purchase services, our water bill, our gas bill, our electric bill, those things have all gone up, as well as the cost of contractors. This year, we also purchased a bus for $109,000, which we didn't do the previous year. So in total, the district has spent $2.3 million more in general fund dollars this fiscal year than last fiscal year at this time. Moving on to our food service expenditures, through the month of March, the district has expended $661,000 in food service compared to $678,000 at this time last year and $462,000 in fiscal year '21. Things that have been mentioned before and in past Board meetings, but negotiated salary increases and the cost of food are the two main drivers for those increases. And then looking at all fund expenditures through the month of March, the district has expended $23.1 million from all funds compared to $21.9 million at this time last year and $19.8 million in fiscal year '21. The district is on pace to spend more than its historical average for reasons mentioned in the general fund spending. And then we'll look at cash. Through the month of March, the district has a total of $21.3 million in cash from the general fund compared to $21.7 at this time last year and $28.8 million in fiscal year '21. Looking at food service through the month of March, the district has a total of $338,000 in cash compared to $193,000 in fiscal year '22 and $60,000 in fiscal year '21. And then all cash through the month of March, the district has a total of $26.4 million compared to $27.3 million at this time last year and $24.3 million in fiscal year '21. The district currently does have a few negative accounts. Our athletic account, our 300 account, is negative $26,000. Our ARPSer 507 fund is negative $5,600. Our account 572, our Title I, is negative $20,000, and our 590 account, Title II, is negative $21,000. All of those 500 accounts will be reimbursed once the project cash request that I sent into ODE get returned to us. And then lastly, we'll take a look on the investment side. Through the month of March, the district has earned a total of $210,734.49 on interest compared to $122,305.10 at this time last year. This is a difference of $88,429.39, or 72.3% more in interest this year. Any questions?
Call or roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
And Mr. Johnston.
I'm staying.
Thank you.
Item nine, Treasurer's Recommendations.
Thank you. Number one, recommend a resolution to approve the financial report for March 2023, and that is attachment A.
I'll move. I'll second.
Mrs. Russell and Mrs. Innes.
And that's he's reporting that that's what's happening.
We'll look at all funds. So through the month of March, the district received $25.2 million in all funds compared to $27.6 million at this time last year and $24.6 million in fiscal year 21. Again, the district is on pace to collect its historical average revenue. Moving on to the expenditure side, for the general funds, through the month of March, the district has expended $20 million, $20.1 million from the general fund compared to $17.8 million at this time last year and $17.5 million in fiscal year 21. So far this year, the district has spent $3.3 million more in salaries than it did the previous year. And this is because last year we reclassed, so reduction of expenditure, 1.9 million from the ARPSR funds. The remaining salary increase of 1.4 million was from moving staff from a bi-weekly to a bi-monthly pay, as well as renegotiate, or I'm sorry, negotiated increases. Likewise, our retirement and insurance benefits have increased, creating an additional $265,000 more this year than the previous year. Purchase services are up roughly $500,000 more than this time last year. This is because the district entered into an additional lease for Apple products at the beginning of the year. That additional lease cost $100,000. And then we also, in the fall, repaired the baseball and softball fields, and that was a cost of $264,000. On top of that, there's also been increased rates, you know, through other things. So like with purchase services, our water bill, our gas bill, our electric bill, those things have all gone up, as well as the cost of contractors. This year, we also purchased a bus for $109,000, which we didn't do the previous year. So in total, the district has spent $2.3 million more in general fund dollars this fiscal year than last fiscal year at this time. Moving on to our food service expenditures, through the month of March, the district has expended $661,000 in food service compared to $678,000 at this time last year and $462,000 in fiscal year 21. Things that have been mentioned before and in past board meetings, but negotiated salary increases and the cost of food are the two main drivers for those increases. And then looking at all fund expenditures through the month of March, the district has expended $23.1 million from all funds compared to $21.9 million at this time last year and $19.8 million in fiscal year 21. The district is on pace to spend more than its historical average for reasons mentioned in the general fund spending. And then we'll look at cash. Through the month of March, the district has a total of $21.3 million in cash from the general fund compared to $21.7 at this time last year and $20.8 million in fiscal year 21. Looking at food service through the month of March, the district has a total of $338,000 in cash compared to $193,000 in fiscal year 22 and $60,000 in fiscal year 21. And then all cash through the month of March, the district has a total of $26.4 million compared to $27.3 million at this time last year and $24.3 million in fiscal year 21. The district currently does have a few negative accounts. Our athletic account, our 300 account, is negative $26,000. Our ARPSR 507 fund is negative $5,600. Our account 572, our Title I, is negative $20,000. And our 590 account, Title II, is negative $21,000. All of those 500 accounts will be reimbursed once the project cash request that I sent into ODE get returned to us. And then lastly, we'll take a look on the investment side. Through the month of March, the district has earned a total of $210,734.49 on interest compared to $122,305.10 at this time last year. This is a difference of $88,429.39, or 72.3% more in interest this year. Any questions?
Call roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Ms. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0. Number two, recommend a resolution to approve the following donations: $2,000 from Edward and Barbara to the Cobal Scholarship and $1,560 from NHS fundraiser to VAPC.
I'll move.
Second. Any questions?
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Ms. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0. And number three, recommend a resolution submitting to the electors of the school district the question of renewing the existing .68 mill levy, tax levy, for the purpose of providing safety and security pursuant to Section 570521 of the Revised Code and as attachment B.
I'll move.
I'll second.
That's just a renewal for our safety and security levy, right?
Correct. Just a renewal. It's not a new tax.
Not new money.
It's not new money, and it's also not for the general fund. It's specifically for the O3O fund, which can only be used for a handful of things: SRO, you know, PD, mental health, and professional development.
All right. Any other questions? Call a roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Ms. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0. Thank you.
Item 10 is the consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the Board, the Treasurer, or the Superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Number one, the minutes of the March 13, 2023 regular meeting. Number two, approve the revisions to district policies 5112, 5112.05 for the second read. Number three, approve the Ohio School Council Governance Policy Change, giving the superintendent authority to modify, amend, or supplement the Ohio Schools Council Policy 1.1 and Policy 1.3, attachment E. Number four, employment actions. Approve the resignation of Stanley Peters Bus Driver and Monitor effective March 20, 2023. Number five, leave of absence for the 2324 school year for Shelby Thomas, grade three. Number six, one-year additional duty contract for the remainder of the 2223 school year, two. Marlena Jacinto, SMS Track, Maria Rains, 8th Grade Washington DC Overnight Chaperone, Seth Lyons, 8th Grade Washington DC Overnight Chaperone, Daniel Walther, 8th Grade Washington DC Overnight Chaperone. Item seven, one-year supplemental contract for the remainder of the 2223 school year, two, Sean Ellis, VHS Softball, Level 15, Step Three. Item eight, one-year classified contract for the 202223 school year, Kimberly Miller, VHS Food Service Assistant, Level Two. Item nine, 2023 Summer Technology Workers, Joshua Parsons, $15 an hour, Hunter Oppheim, $15 an hour, Cameron Loeb, $12 an hour. Number 10, approve up to 15 hours from April 1, 2023 to June 2, 2023 at a per diem rate of 4356 per hour to Brooks Baffert to transition students from preschool to kindergarten. Item 11, approve the payment from the track donation fund to the following: $500 to Aaron Dawson for statistics and filming, $500 each to Devin Snook and Jeanette Caffrell, Shawna Stillman for operating electronic timing systems for all home track and field events. Any items to be removed? Okay. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
We need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second. Now call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Ms. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Item 12, dates and location of the upcoming board meetings. Meetings will be held at the Vermillion High School Commons, 1250 Sanford Street in Vermillion, unless otherwise noted. We have a regular meeting on Monday, May 8 at 6:00 p.m., Monday, June 12 at 6:00 p.m., and Monday, July 10 at 6:00 p.m. And then item 13, public participation. Public participation section of the board agenda is specifically designed for the public to address the board with compliments, concerns, ideas, and/or questions. The board welcomes your comments. If you wish to address the board regarding a problem, the board would remind you of two things. First, your comments should be factual and respectful of the rights of others. Second, before coming to the board with a specific problem, you should have first addressed the problem with the appropriate teacher, staff member, or administrator. This meeting of the Board of Education in public is for the purpose of conducting school district business. We don't have anyone signed up to speak, so.
We got that presentation.
Right. Yep, yep, yep. That's coming up. All right, then. So, presentation. David Rice to present the Lifewise program.
Well, this is my first board meeting ever, which is kind of interesting. So, I just want to thank you for this opportunity. Again, my name is David Rice. I'm at 5178 Concord Drive, Vermillion. I've been a resident most of my life here at Vermillion, moved away for a little while and came back. Vermillion's always a place to bring our family back to. I can live anywhere in the country, and I choose Vermillion because I love this town. And I love its up. The people of this town, more importantly. You know, one of the things that some of you do know on the board, the school safety bill. I wrote the framework for that law. I gave testimony before the House and Senate. Vermillion was named in that law. It became a tool that we're being using for school safety. A little nervous, I don't know why. But I want to go ahead and talk to you tonight about the why, what, and how of teaching Bible during school. First of all, I'd like to introduce some of the folks from the steering committee today. First, I'd like to talk, introduce a buddy, Buddy Workman. He is the North Central Ohio Representative for Lifewise. He's here tonight. If there's something I can't answer, like in this security-driven program. The next gentleman, kind of doesn't need any introduction, I guess, Mr. Cliff Jordan, who's been on the steering committee. We also have a Bob Judd. Where's Bob Judd? He's on the steering committee. Arthur Lee. Yeah, Arthur. Cliff Morris is here as well. He's the president of the VMA. Father Paul Schreier. Okay, didn't make it. Okay, great. Barb O'Gallagher. Also, we have Sean Salado. Jim Torski. Jim's in the steering committee. And frankly, my favorite committee member, my wife, Cameron. So, she's here. But also, when I kind of recognize a couple additional people that have been really instrumental with this program as well. Russ Nelson is here. Okay. And also Jonathan Hume. So, but yes, thank you. Let's go ahead. Really, what I want to start out here first is, this video I'm already showing you, this actually took place here in Erie County. So, let's go ahead and roll it together.
When I heard the story of Lifewise, I was just blown away. And the impact that I saw in Lifewise, we heard the stories from the people about how it was good for their children, it was good for the schools, and really building a better, kinder, character-filled community. I just saw people of all walks of life, you know, just say, yes, this has to happen. We'll turn over our time and treasure to it. And so, we've been touring the state, county by county, telling the story of Lifewise. It's a practice of students being released from public school during school hours to receive religious instruction, provided the program is off-school property, privately funded, and students have parental permission. I can't overstate the importance of that phrase, "during school hours." In 1952, the Supreme Court ruled that this is constitutional. Now, more than half the states in the nation have laws on the books specifically about release time. And this practice has been out there for 70 years. However, almost no one has heard about it. We really believe it's the single greatest missed opportunity of the American church to reach the next generation. Immediately, we put on the paper what Lifewise was going to be all about. Number one, being unapologetically gospel-centered. And number two, we are going to have a character-focused because we know that schools spend time and money and energy on character education. And we know the gospel transforms character. And so, we want to say, hey, we think we have the best character education program in the country because it's character transformation. You know, you'd think if a community can support a McDonald's, and a library, and a Y M C A, and all these churches, you would think every community in this country would have a program like this to teach our public school students the Bible. So, it's legal and it's so impactful. We watched in a couple of schools, our phones started ringing off the hook. And last year, we served an additional 28 schools. It continues to snowball. We redrew our goals. We said, well, maybe we should serve, maybe we can serve 1,000 schools in the next five years. So, we worked out the numbers. And so, okay, to do that, we need to serve 84 next year. But sure enough, we have confirmation to serve. In fact, now this slide is outdated.
I know.
Because as of yesterday, we are confirmed in actually 120 schools to be live this coming school year. When I do something publicly, people make it seem like it's political. This isn't political. This is, this is about kids and the community. I am here as Lieutenant Governor, sure, the Governor's Office of Faith-Based Initiatives is behind this. But it's not about me. It's about the responsibility we have as Christians, as citizens, to educate our children and to share the message of Jesus. That's why I'm here.
So, you know, what's interesting is, you see that presentation, and they were talking about 120 schools. This is 2022. Does anybody know how many school districts, public school districts, not per county, are in the state of Ohio?
612, I believe.
It's 611, really close. Could be wrong. I could be wrong. That's what, but we'll call it 612. How's that? But as of today, in the state of Ohio, starting this coming school year, you have 252 schools. I kind of put up a chart of just the school districts locally that surround us. If you take a look at just Erie County, the only two schools that currently do not have Lifewise, it is San Dusky and Huron, and Huron is looking at it now, correct? The two schools that are, is San Dusky and Huron, correct? Yeah, Huron is in a very similar position we are right now. So, if you take a look at like Nashville County, Huron County, every school district in those counties currently has Lifewise program. So, it's something that is, you know, taking, you know, it's like storm, really started here in Ohio, but it is growing across the United States with more than 320 schools across the U.S. that are moving forward with that. Okay? Let's talk about the why. So, there's nothing really surprising about this chart right here. When you take a look at your all-time highs, you know, what you're dealing with with youth, anxiety, obviously depression, suicide, these are all things we're dealing with today. And what are also all-time lows, you see church attendance is at an all-time low right now. You also see, you know, Bible literacy, you know, professional faith. These things are all at all-time lows. And I know we're talking to school here, right? And there's a reason why we're talking about some of these things in school, because the laws are replacing, allowing them to afford. So, what we're going to do, so, go ahead. So, again, we focused on, this is not on school property, right? This is fully funded. We've already raised more than 20,000 dollars to move forward with this program, all right? The only way a student participates in it is because you, as a parent, watch your kids in this program. That's it. If you don't want to participate, you don't have to participate. So, very, very simple. Again, during school hours. So, how are we going to move forward with this? So, again, you kind of saw the first video. You know, obviously, this is gospel-focused. It's clearly, you know, our intentions are very clear, right? We're teaching the Bible specifically for character education in, to students, so people want to participate in this program, okay? And, you know, again, completely focused on character is really 100% the goal of this. And it's not just character, but it's also transformation of individuals, where you're going to see life-changing effects in many of these students. And you're seeing in test scores, I put a lot of data up here, and I'm not going to make you go through this tonight, but the data is very clear. You know, when you take a look at universities such as Columbia University, you know, they talk about the rates of drug and alcohol abuse are significantly lower with people that are religious, in fact. So, you know, there are things that are really changing people's lives in order to have a program like this. So, again, character focus, as you can see, we've got multiple churches, all local church-driven. The steering committee has selected the Catholic churches where we like to host this program. But we also have several other churches that are available to us who are more than willing to host as well. So, the program's plug-and-play. So, right now, at this point, there's nothing we need to do. The curriculum is finished. Everything is complete, completely plug-and-play. There's nothing we have to do on this side of the house. And again, this isn't Ohio-based only. This is a program that's really going nationwide. And most importantly, if you take a look at kind of the excellence, you know, they surveyed 172, and I apologize, this chart is so far away, teachers and administrators. And I'll kind of read this to you a little bit. So, when you take a look at this, you know, relationship is kind of the first one. I have a positive working relationship with the Lifewise staff and volunteers. 87% agreed, 12% were neutral, and 1% disagreed. You take a look at decisions. So, in general, Lifewise has a positive impact on students' decision-making and relationships. 75% of the teachers, administrators would agree with that, 4% disagree, and you have 21% are somewhat neutral in that area. So, you also take a look at, you know, attitude. In general, Lifewise has a positive impact on students' outlook, attitude, motivation. So, again, 80% agree, 4% and 16% are neutral. So, as you can see, it's overall very, very positive numbers from, you know, staff, administration. But lastly, is really kind of the question that we all need to kind of ask ourselves, would I like to see Lifewise programs in more schools? And when you take a look at that data, 87% would like to see that, 4% disagree, 9% are neutral. I think what's really important about this is, you know, you're starting to see the effects of that very, very clearly. I want to kind of read into the record if we can, you know, why. We have a letter here.
Okay, this is all, I think this is given.
From New London Local Schools. To whom it may concern, this letter is to provide support for the Lifewise program. As superintendent of New London Local Schools, Lifewise has been a part of my district for the past two years. During this time, I've experienced firsthand the positive impact that the program has had on our students and our overall community. During the first year of implementation, the focus of the program was on grades kindergarten through fifth grade. During that time, the number of students grew significantly, and the students that attended demonstrated great enjoyment with the program. This enjoyment led to an expansion of Lifewise into our middle and high school buildings, allowing New London's program to be the first K through 12 program in Ohio. Overall, the students that attend the program have demonstrated a positive attitude toward their peers and teachers, a renewed focus on academics, and an overall sense of love and belonging in their hearts. Additionally, Lifewise has made a positive impact on our community. Being a small rural school district, New London Local Schools has home five worship sites plus multiple satellite sites that encompass four different religions. Prior to Lifewise being introduced to our community, there was a mutual respect among our faith communities. But I wouldn't characterize it as collaborative or unified. Lifewise created a spark that brought our multiple faith-based communities together. For example, the local steering committee has representation from every faith found within our community. The common goal of spreading the gospel to the children of our community has created unity and collaboration. While still growing and developing, there is a sense of renewed community in New London. Overall, the impact that Lifewise has had on New London is immeasurable. It has rallied our community around a common goal, providing students, parents, with this valuable opportunity to provide their children with gospel-based education, and has had a positive impact within the school. I strongly support Lifewise in our community. If I can provide any further information or support, please contact me at beyromano@nschools.org. Respectfully, Bradley A. Romano, Superintendent, New London Local Schools.
Look, if you're looking for positive, you're always going to find it, right, with a program like this. There's clearly positives we have. If you're looking for negative, you can find it, right? There's always positive and negative. Everything happens in life. But this is really an awesome opportunity for the families of this community. And really, that's what we're kind of looking forward to. So, one more video, a little bit shorter. It's a little bit of interpretation. I think this shows a little more detail of the program. Go ahead.
The Supreme Court has spoken. Public school students can receive Bible education during school hours. I can't overstate the importance of that phrase in there. It's "during school hours." Teach the Bible during school hours, during school hours. Bible education during school hours. I know it sounds crazy, but it's real. In 1952, the Supreme Court ruled that public school students can be released from school in the middle of the school day to receive Bible education as long as the program is off-school property, privately funded, and they have parental permission. Not only is the concept possible, but it's spreading rapidly, and students' lives are being changed. I have seen my own children testify. I've seen their classmates changed.
Kids need to be affirmed. They need sports. But more than anything, they need to hear the gospel.
I was in one class recently where the teacher asked if anyone knew the names of Jesus' parents. And in a class of 20 public school students, not a single one knew that Joseph and Mary were the names of Jesus' parents. But all of those students are now being taught the Bible.
To think if I had a son come up, I don't even know what our lives would look like in like our story. It might not just be, you know, 20 minutes in a classroom. It might lead somebody to the church and change the whole household. There are people in our backyard who have never heard the name of Jesus. I don't know about any other organizations that are doing anything like this. We wouldn't be able to discuss these things with them if not for doing it right in the middle of the school day.
The law allows us to do this, so why not do it?
This is Lifewise, Westerville, fifth grade.
Okay. And this is, this is, I'll call it some more videos after this one. This is for the superintendent.
I was just so impressed, and it was so exciting to get to come over and actually see the classrooms in action. And the children were just so engaged, and the teachers were just incredible. And I thought, where was this when I was superintendent? As a former school leader, you know, really focusing on family and community engagement was always a gap. It was always an area that we could have. It was always an area that we could have used extra support. And so to really think about how LifeWise could come alongside school leaders and educators will just make a huge impact on our students today and in the future. We all want what's best for each and every one of our children in our schools and in our communities. And when you can have a community that wants to come alongside and partner with you as a school leader and wants to help, again, just wrap their arms around our children and just support them to be the best they can possibly be as responsible citizens, productive citizens, why wouldn't we want to embrace that opportunity?
So last video, I promise. So, you know, intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education, Martin Luther King. So, you know, folks, board members, I really appreciate this opportunity to speak with you tonight. It's much more appreciated than you ever realize. So I know the positions you're in. The nice part is we have board policies in place that are already ready to go for release time. We have state audits there. Really, at this point, we just need acknowledgement to work with us. That's all we're looking for. A program from you to say, hey, let's move forward with LifeWise. And that's really where we're at. Do you have any questions or thoughts at this time?
Who teaches?
Yeah, so.
Community members or is it LifeWise?
This would be hard, people that they actually hire for these positions, also the volunteers.
I have a question. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I have a question. So when do you decide what time of day the students report from school?
Yeah, as the meeting, we partner together. It's really what's scheduled. You know, there's always specials. You know, my wife was a school teacher, a principal, you know, in an elementary school. We're looking at really starting a little bit like you wanted it, start with the elementary side and grow from there, right? But as you know, we're scheduling specials. Teachers love that. So if you can have a special where they have some additional free time to allow kids to go ahead and participate in this.
How does, how does LifeWise keep it non-denominational?
Yeah, so that's really kind of the biggest keys to this whole thing, is keeping it non-denominational. And frankly, that's one of the things personally that really drew me to this program. It's programs that they've written, and it's represented by, you know, people within our community to help ensure that it stays as a non-denominational program. So there will be a board in place for this to help ensure that happens.
Why pull kids out of school rather than having it as an after-school program?
No, that's such a great program, you know, such a great question. And frankly, I think if you take a look at, you know, the issue we have today with, you know, Bible education just not being had, it's at an all-time low for all those things. And for us, we're looking at really character. And we're looking at, when you take a look at two, you know, there's a couple of things that have kind of happened here. You know, the reading is part of this program, the role-playing is part of this program. So if you take a look at what the superintendent said, everybody that's in this program, you're seeking those test scores that are basically being increased for all, everybody that's participating in this program. So it's got to be something that happens during the school day, or people never, ever get to see, you know, learn about, you know, the religious aspect of this.
How often, like, is it once a week?
Once a week.
Is it one hour once a week?
Again, it's basically, it's anywhere from 20 minutes to one hour based upon the specials.
So they would be missing art or gym? So what do you mean during specials? I don't know.
Yeah, so you would just create a special for this.
So you'd create a new slot for a special, so you get to schedule it and then?
So is this like a class they take?
That's right.
And in your packet, there's many people that have, there are specialty experts in there that would work with you to be created with your special. They've worked with the principal. So I know some districts even have programs. Every year, they add something different, like a leadership program, or a special art program, or a PDS program. This would be another program on character education. So you can go with the schedule, you work with the principals closely with Buddy and the director. And say, here are your goals and your schedules. Maybe there's a rotational basis. Some programs are, depending on how many grades, it's once a week, or it's rotating something else. So it really works with all the school districts that we've seen. Just sitting down and filling all the holes with that, with the principal.
You guys provide the transportation for it? I saw a bus on there.
Yeah, so as you saw, you know, we have our buses. You know, in some cases, the school district's saying, but we should use our buses. We'll do whatever, we're here a part of it.
How is, how is LifeWise financially sustainable?
Again, it's fully funded by us as a committee. We, you know, we've got multiple churches here. Myself and a gentleman named Cliff German are on that committee to participate and help.
So there's no cost, there's like no cost to the parent who's sending their child?
No, nothing.
And does, I know we've got some representatives from different churches. Does the ministerial association unanimously support the program?
Not 100%, but majority of the churches.
How many churches are part of the?
About eight churches.
And how many of the eight would you say support the program?
All the two.
Okay.
There's another church over here on Decatur though. He's not Pastor Dan Bevreck. He was one that wanted to also use his church. And the facility was beautiful, but it was a little small. But he married, he, 100% and his congregation supported. He also lives in LeBran, so, but that's another church. And so he was unable to be part of the ministerial association.
Yeah, so what's nice about that church, it's less than 100 yards away. You know, our fear was that it may work in year one, just because, you know, it's the size of the church. You know, typically, it's about 50% participation. Year one, 65%. Year two tends to be 95% of participation in the program. You're just kind of getting the program going. Who knows what's going to be here for a while? But, you know, eventually, that church would just simply be too small to really house this. But maybe it's literally walking distances, two doors down from the elementary school.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before we do item 14, just two quick things. One, just since we have a fairly sizable audience tonight, when Eric resigned from the board, the process to bring a new board member on is that there will be a posting to the public for anyone interested in joining the school board as an appointed member. When someone resigns midterm, you appoint, the board appoints. So the board would meet with anyone who applied and then select a candidate to fill that position until the November elections, at which time that person would have to run to become a, you know, a board member, an elected board member. So that's the process for that. And then secondly, I think it's worth mentioning, because we do have our students voting. Could you kind of explain their role a little bit and?
Yeah, so they're representing the student body on the school board. Because they're not elected, you know, officials, they haven't gone through an election process, their votes are just representative. So they're just, they're just voting. When they say yes to anything on the agenda, they're just being representative of themselves and the student body. They are not, it's not an official vote, okay? They also cannot, you'll see that they cannot vote to go into executive session because they cannot participate in executive sessions, okay? So this has all been explained to my met with them today, had a great conversation about their role and how this all works. There'll be a lot more questions going forward. They're sitting beside me so that I can explain things as we go along. And sometimes I'll stop and explain something that I don't think they understand so that we, you know, we're all on the same page. But it's just a great learning experience for them, but it's, there's nothing official about anything that they do in terms of a vote.
Just wanted to throw that out there in case there were any questions.
Can I add on to what you said about the process for filling the spot? It will be posted, applications will be taken. We haven't met to consider the deadline for that yet. Interviews will be done, you'll see special meetings, but it's all in executive session. So the meetings where the interviews are done are not open to the public.
Item 14, adjournment to executive session. Recommend a resolution for the board to move into executive session for the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees, or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee or a student unless an employee or official or student requests for a public hearing. Make a motion. I'll second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0, and the time is 7:00 P.M.